I call the Ware County Board of Commissioners meeting of Monday, August 10th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Begin with a roll call vote of Commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Burris.
Present.
Commissioner Barnard.
Present.
Commissioner Carter.
Present.
And the Chair is present. Let the record show, Madam, uh, Madam Manager, excuse me. I'm used to, I'm used to a Madam Clerk sitting over there.
He's got gray hair.
Madam. Mr. Manager, excuse me. Okay, let's stand for the implication that I've asked Commissioner Carter to do and the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Barnard.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for your mercy. Thank you, Lord, most of all, for loving us in spite of our actions.
Yes.
We pray, God, that you'll bless each one here in the homes they represent.
Yes, Lord.
Help us, Lord, that whatever we say or do might bring honor and glory to your precious name and to this community. Lead us and direct us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Commissioners, I need a, a motion to approve our agenda.
I make a motion to please the adjutant set forth.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. I consent items, item five, approval of meetings, work session of July the 13th, 2020, and regular meeting of July the 13th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So move us Chair.
I got a motion, uh, I have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions concerning the minutes? Any corrections, Commissioners? Hearing none. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, we get on down into item A. Mr. Manager.
Okay. Yes, sir. Under tab A is ABC Avenue Extension Jamestown Access Road Project.
Okay, uh, we had, we had quite a lengthy discussion this afternoon, and we have had for quite some time. And I'm gonna be honest with you folks, it's been a spin wheel. Ain't been no, far as I'm concerned, ain't been nothing accomplished. But we spent a lot of money, and I'd like to ask the manager this time if he could tell me how much money we've already spent.
Uh, it's 292,000 rounded up, 292.
292,000.
Yes, sir. That's, that's including the 70s.
What we gonna do? So with how, my, my question is, how are we gonna solve this issue, uh, with the, with the trains in Jamestown? From Jordan Drive to Blaylock Road? That seems to be the biggest issue. Runs down to the run of Kell Creek. Everything east of the railroad tracks seems we are getting nowhere. If this commission will accept my motion effective to date, one, appoint a spokesperson, Jamestown community, talk about east side of the tracks, you will appoint a spokesperson to come to this commission at the time that I'm gonna recommend. Two, the community east of the railroad tracks, that's everybody from, from Kell Creek to Jordan Drive, east. And if you want to include, uh, the, the area above, past the tracks, uh, all up there, Frontier States, they include in that, that's fine too. Well, in fact, if it's gonna be into consideration, yes, that'll be your, that'll be your prerogative if you want them to come. I'd recommend the community. The, three, organize a committee, amount, uh, that's, that'd be left up to the, the Jamestown community. How many people you want on this committee to sit down to study? Or, you, I know you'll have meets, won't have meets at Jamestown Baptist Church, that's the centralized location. Four, plan meetings in Jamestown Baptist Church, community only east side of the tracks, as I just said. The community to, to provide the Ware County Commission by November the 9th, 2020, to solve this problem. A way of escape. Well, we, it started as a way of escape. It, far as I'm concerned, it's still a way of escape. Six, all residents that live in this area to sign a resolution, however long it's got to be, every resident that lives in that, in that area. Date, if they signed it, their name, their address, do you support this resolution that we have spelled out here to solve this problem of the trains? No, and I said, no, note all residents assigned. Their recommendation, this is a recommendation to solve the problem by February, by, as I said, November the 9th, 2020. That's the, the meeting. Now, there's a lot of good folks out there, sitting in front of a bunch. And I know you can have meetings, you can have, at your leisure, if the county commission's not gonna be involved. You have meetings with your people out there, you tell them, we got to have a way of escape. And if you come back, oh, no, we don't want a way of escape, that'll be fine too. But we're gonna let you folks decide. This county commission ain't gonna decide. Because we get accused enough of taking sides and doing this and doing that, and that's not the case, people. This is, this is your res, this is your area. It ain't, it ain't where Jimmy Brown lives, it's where you live. We want you to be satisfied, and we'll do everything, or this commission will do everything in its power to, to work with that. But we want you to bring us a plan. That's, that's, that's what we expect. So anyhow, do I have a motion to accept any, anything you want to add to that motion?
I'll second to get it on the table, Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion for discussion.
That was my motion. You second?
Second, yes.
Okay, any, any more questions or comments?
I'm in favor of it, but for a simple reason, we, we simply cannot build a road with skyhooks, as some people think.
That, that's what they'll come and...
Yeah.
Now, you already had a meeting out there last year at the church, and everybody voted to run that road straight through.
Yes.
The side track.
That's what, we want y'all to come back with us, with us.
For all we got to do.
Because you got to get on private property.
That's, that's all I can say. I got a motion and a second. You second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Begin with a roll call vote, Commissioner.
Is the Congress still up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, when we had the meeting at Jamestown Baptist Church, you know, we took the consensus of the crowd then. Probably 75% of people there agreed for it to get at ABC Avenue.
Correct.
At the same time, if that's what the people in Jamestown want, I would recommend to go ahead and put that ABC Avenue without having to spend another three months, or next three months, we could already get ready for bids to go out. But since the commission's waiting three months, I would go with it.
And I agree with State, if you're gonna do it, do it where the people want it. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna call, you know, the main on me, calling on the rest of them. You're calling it on two of them, you're only calling it on, you're calling it on a bunch of them, I mean.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion and a second on this, this motion, to let the Jamestown community bring back a proposal to this commission by November the 9th.
I was still in discussion mode right now.
Yes, if you wanted to say something else, go ahead and say it.
Let me just say this right here, and, uh, like I say, I think it's no better representation than when the people that's gonna be impacted by something, to have a say so in it, but by the same token, you know, we as commissioners, we have a certain amount of responsibility also. Now, I rode out that way and, like I said, I know where the ABC Avenue and where it makes that curve and all, and my understanding, when I first come on the commission, like I said, I haven't been here for quite six months yet, was that we were gonna run parallel with the track. But since that time, I understand that CSX has pretty much reneged on that, about being on the right of way, and I understood Mr. Tanner said that we really wouldn't have to be on the right of way, and I don't know whether, how much, and maybe our kind of engineer, would we have to be on the right of way to proceed straight down?
The idea with the, the, uh, right of way and railroad originally was to use as much of the railroad's right of way as we could to lessen the impact to the adjacent property owners.
Right, okay.
That was the start, that's what we were trying to do to begin with.
Okay.
Try to cut down on the impact to Mr. Tanner and those other neighbors on the other side of the creek as well. After we get into it, a year down the road, we, we had meetings early on with CSX, then, you know, a couple of months ago, we had a call with them, and they said that they really would rather not we be on their right of way. So then, then you actually come off the right of way, and then you have to go totally on private property, and then it's a lot larger impact to the property owners on both sides of the creek. Mr. Tanner and his immediate neighbors on the north side of the creek, and the property owners on the south side of the creek as well. And if that's still the desire of, uh, the commission and the folks in Jamestown, it'll just have to be the way it is, and we'll have to go forward with that. That was one of the other options we looked at, we're trying to not have to impact as many residents. That, that would be the total process up to this date.
Okay.
How we started the project and how we got where we are.
Okay, and that was, that was, excuse me, that, that was my underst, that was my understanding that if it went the original route, like I say, this been in making for two or three years or whatever, that it would have been, you know, uh, right down beside the railroad tracks. But now, since the railroad doesn't want the county on the right of way, so now we got to shift over, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yes.
All right, and if they shift over, then it's gonna impact property owners.
Correct.
Okay, so, so right now, it seems like we kind of at an impasse. I mean, if, if you can't, we're not gonna be able to go on the railroad right of way, so if we run it that route, then we're gonna be impacting some of the property owners. If we're not, then, they're talking about these other options, one and two or whatever.
Let me say something. You take a left and you get going. Everything that's paved there, all the way from Turners Road, is a railroad right of way. All the way to the front steps of that church, all the way down there. So if the railroad don't want us on the right of way, then why are we on a paved road now? If we have a paved road there that is considered a county paved road, and it is on a railroad right of way, and people love it up and down, and that's the only interstate route to get down to Turners Road, then why can't the railroad bear with us and give us that much right of way down there for the children?
That, that's, that's why we want the Jamestown community.
We don't, we don't have the backing that y'all have to go to the railroad, to get the railroad to these meetings where the railroad is listed up. But then again, we have to come back and tell them, because if you call the Federal Railroad Board like I have, and talk to them about the trains, they'll tell you right quick, right, that we've got to come back to our city and our county commissions, and it is up to them to give us a round round. But then you go back to the railroad, the railroad's, and we'll tell them we don't want you on the road. How much railroad right of way does railroad need? If they're not gonna put in another side track like they did in front of the dollar store, and if they were gonna put in another side track like they did in front of the dollar store, why didn't they go ahead and make that bridge, turn it around, a two, a two lane bridge? And if they're gonna do it there, then they got four more bridges they got to do. They got, uh, right away from me to Kell Creek, they got to do Sutil River, and they got to do two creek bridges on the other side of Sutil River. So the railroad apparently ain't in the process of even thinking about running two tracks out of that way. But if they are, they don't need that much right of way.
All we can do is pass on to you folks what they send him, our manager. That's all we got to go on.
I, I understand what you're trying to do with the committee in Jamestown, but if they elect to go down, come out of Windclay Hall, the people on the south side of Kell Creek needs to be in on this committee too. We need to have a say.
That's right, that's, that's why, that's, my motion was for you folks to include all those folks. So we got to have an idea, folks, let's all come together. That's all I know, that's all I can do.
Was it all originally on CSX right of way, or did the drive pan involved too?
It would have been, there were some private plans involved because of the height that it had to be, with the height of the railroad track crossing, trying to stay, um, and not impacting the balance, because the railroad has to approve everything that you do there. So the cause of how high the, the bridge was gonna have to be to be up, like the railroad bridge is, if there were some slope easements that were gonna have to be obtained by the private property.
So you got private property, go ahead and buy anyway. So, and the railroad won't so much for their land, you can still buy private property cheaper. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're not talking about buying.
We got two ladies.
Railroad right of way, but they're not selling right of way, we can't buy it from them.
That's what railroad say is their property.
Basically, what's gonna happen, Randy, if we have to get away from the railroad right of way, you're gonna go down the turns, you're gonna have to jump over 125 feet on Turners Road, you're gonna take a lot of turns, go down about 75, 80 feet, turn back left, go through that man's front door, cross that creek, and the rest of the gang, this is G C gang, by both of them houses there, across the railroad right of way, and ride up to that fence, G C's fence, which the rest of the gang is.
I see.
Which there's already a road there.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about from, from Blaylock, over the Frontier State.
Okay, from there, from there, the railroad wants a 100 foot right of way, from the center of that railroad track, over 50 foot, where that railroad comes down, that federal, that being turned into a town, turning right. And I'm, I'm willing to settle for that. And then, while they're building it up as high as the railroad.
It won't be there.
If you do that US one bridge, it would be under more than 400.
It'll make it that.
And while they're going within 5 foot of the height of the railroad.
You gotta have it 4 feet above the high water mark.
Impact the railroad. Railroad, so you're not cutting into the railroad's balance because of the width of the.
So y'all talking about there being 4 foot pushing dirt into, or building the road up, a road paving into that creek there?
No, if you came off of the railroad right of way, you wouldn't have to worry about cutting into the railroad's balance. Then you could set the elevation of the bridge, whatever it would have to be, with the hydraulic analysis for the water to pass under the bridge, it would be probably closer to what the bridge height is on the US 1 car bridge.
What, what length bridge are y'all talking about building out?
180 feet was the last, I heard from the consultant.
Did you, did you not use eminent domain to get through it?
No. No, Lord.
That's the problem, you can't touch the railroad.
They got eminent domain.
You can't not touch the railroad.
Let's, let's, uh, let's, let's go ahead and, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? On again with a roll call vote, Commissioner Pope. Commissioner Burris. Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. All right, item two, item B, excuse me, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Um, item B is Resolution 2020-12. It is to set the millage rate for fiscal year 2021, uh, at the rollback rate of 15.240.
All right, I have a motion, Commissioners.
I make a motion to set the 2021, excuse me, fiscal millage rate.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second.
Do we need to put, um, set the millage rate in that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, we do.
Or you can just say you can, you're just approving Resolution 2021-12, does the same thing.
Okay. In our previous, I don't know, okay, we got a motion and a second. All right, any comments? My comment is that this, this millage rate is the lowest. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tax Commissioner. I've been on this commission 11 and a half years, this, this administration has, has lowered it from 16.549 to 15.24.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, and the driving force behind that is that splosh tax being a great majority of it. From keeping increase in taxes, let me rephrase that.
I'm in on that. Yeah, but the, the splosh tax offsets, you know, the projects that, that the county wants to do, if we didn't have the splosh, and you still wanted to fund those projects.
We'd be a trouble.
And of course, your, your millage rate would have to increase, property taxes would have to be increased to, uh, be those financial rates.
Whereas, if I understood the manager right, this penny, I'm gonna drive this penny just a little bit further, this splosh penny we lost. Generates about $7 million a year, that's equal, I think you said last meeting, that's about six mils of taxes.
It's, it's right at like 5.9. Or is it 8 million dollars?
Okay. All right, that's all I got to say. Anybody else? Okay, begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Commissioner.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Commissioner Carter had to step in. Okay. Item C, Mr. Manager.
Um, under tab C is request to award a bid, um, to Georgia asphalt producers for the 2020 L-MIG resurfacing improvements project, um, grant in the amount of 1,120,811 and 75 cents.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to reset the plus minus improvement grant.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments, Commissioners?
The Chairman, under, on this list, there was, um, two streets that were supposed to be picked up from the last bid. Woodlake and Finish Woodlake and Finish Williams Lane. I would expect, um, the engineer to come back with a request for a change order to add those at the same unit cost, so just to put that in the record.
All right.
What road was that?
Woodlake and Williams Lane off Central Avenue.
Okay. I see there's some roads, uh, 27 to be exact, is that correct, Mr. Man, 27 streets?
I think so, yes, sir.
Uh, a good many of them's out in the Jamestown area, and in that area that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, another comment I'd like to make, uh, we having to put 102,000, with, with the L-MIG money, we have to put, is that 10% or 30%?
10%.
10%.
Yes, sir. Since we're in the regional T-splosh, that, that law changed at the 10%.
Okay, we having to put 102,563 and 23 cents, a splosh pennies. So that, that penny is a, is a handy thing to have. All right, we got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
You got a little rock road in there with, with valleys for drinking. Other creeks in there got curbs, how come that isn't be fixed with curbing down Blaylock and Huckleberry?
That, that I can't answer. That was done years ago under a previous administration, that's what they called swell paving. That's why, why? I don't know. I guess it could be, be expensive.
Yeah, we'd have to redesign it, um, not as there's something else that could be done. We'd have to redesign it to put curb and gutter like you was talking about, I don't know the length of that.
Yeah.
Randy, what kind of pavement they supposed to put there in the asphalt, are they gonna rerock that, or what they gonna do there?
There'll be a level, of course, and then a recircus, of course. We just, we just did something real similar to this in Frontier States, in a lot of those roads, we.
This part?
We had the old W-section pavement that Mr. Chairman had mentioned.
Yeah.
And we come, we came in there and, um, and overlaid, leveled and overlaid, and they're in really bad shape. Same thing we had in Frontier States with the utility contracts, everything that been out there, and so, so we had to level it first and then overlay it, and they, it varies a lot on the widths, but the Frontier States turned out, um, pretty good. And Sentinel Trails and other road entitlements, construction with W-section pavement, they overlaid several years ago, the travel way with asphalt, and we were, we were planning to follow that same approach with this in Jamestown.
All right.
Have you seen that in Frontier States, we've overlaid?
So what about all the rough edges you gonna leave there, um, above the bars? Could you dig that out, or can you do something with that also?
It'd just be like, like, uh, Mr. Manager was saying earlier, it'd be a big increase to the cost of the contract, but I can definitely talk to the contractor and find out, you know, how much it would, it would cost. If it was a huge amount, would mine have to repurpose the project or something, couldn't do it in the chamber.
Well, it'd be nice to have a fixed knife like rest of the streets in there.
That was one of the things that happened years ago, swell paving and, there's a lot of people.
But I'm like you, when I walk my place.
I understand. Hey, I agree with you 100%.
And that was about 1,300, and, and I've not really seen anything for rock dunks on it.
Yes, sir.
And you got holes in it, it's just like riding dirt roads.
Yes, sir. I understand. But this commission didn't do that. That was done by a previous commission.
But I'm asking you to fix it.
Sir?
I'm asking you to fix it.
We got, if, if we can come up with the money and the cost analysis, that's. It's all about dollars, times.
That's right. And that's what I'm playing off of, I'm playing it back as well.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to see you fix it.
Yes, sir. All right. Put that in your notes, Mr. Manager.
Okay, we will, we'll look into it, sure will.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Begin with a roll call vote, Commissioner Pope. Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Commissioner Carter's still absent. All right, item D.
Okay, under tab D is a request to make appointments to the Waycross Ware County Land Bank Authority Board. Uh, we have for the recommendations, nominations would be for post five, be Commissioner Leonard Burris, post six, Mr. Steve Strickland, and post seven, Mr. Carlos Nelson.
Chairman, I'm moved that we accept the recommendation of the county manager as presented.
I see.
For the positions on the land bank board.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Item E, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab E is a request to approve an alcohol license for 1967 State Street. Um, to get your answer, Commissioner Barnard about the, uh, the locate, or the address for the applicant, it's, uh, 1801 Central Avenue.
1801 Central.
1810, excuse me.
1810.
Thank you, I'm sorry, 1810.
All right. Item F.
We need to get a.
We got a. We got to approve that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Chairman, a little approval is presented. I move approval as presented.
I second.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? This is just a different hands, this has had a license for years, but just a new head, a new owner, I mean. All right, got a motion in a second, any more questions? Hearing none, begin with a roll call vote with Commissioner Pope, Commissioner Barnard, Commissioner Burris, and the chair votes high. All right, item F, County Manager.
Okay, uh, under tab F is consideration to renew the County Manager's employment contract. And I'll leave it to you or County Attorney.
Madam Attorney, I'm going to let you address this for, for the commission.
After discussion, it's my understanding that commission does desire to renew Mr. Moy's contract. They are pleased with his work and so, um, we will, if, if the commission would like to go ahead and approve that renewal tonight, then I will have a contract for the board to sign tomorrow. But my understanding is you desire for the terms to be the same with the salary that he is currently making.
Okay. Y'all have heard the, uh, Madam Attorney's statement, have a motion?
I move approval.
Yeah, I got a motion.
Sorry.
We got a second, but Commissioner Pope, any more discussion? Hearing none, begin with a roll call vote.
I got one question. The salary increase, we need to put pending the evaluation. If we approved the contract just like it is now, we might have a hard time coming back to give the increase.
So, um, the commission certainly determines the increase as they deem appropriate. But it's my understanding what you all's plan is, is that you'd like to, because the current contract, I think expired two days ago. And so we want to go ahead and get something in place. So we are going to approve this contract with the same terms as before, the same salary that he's currently making. Um, and then the contract also envisions an annual review process. And so we will go through that process and then if there is a, um, a salary increase that the board deems appropriate at that time, that was when that decision will be made. I agree, right, so that is envisioned that there, um, that there could and likely will be a salary increase after the evaluation is completed.
That's correct. Like you indicated, it's already pretty much in the contract itself, it's all inclusive.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Pending, you know, the valuation process.
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion? Commissioner Carter says she come back, this is, we got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract for the manager.
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion in a second, all right, any more questions? Hearing none, I'll begin with a roll call vote with Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Barnard, Commissioner Burris, Commissioner Pope, and the chair votes high. All right. County Managers Report.
Okay, um, just two things. One is that we will need to have a call meeting Wednesday, 10:30, 11:00, to approve the Board of Education's, um, millage rate, if we're able to do it then.
Yes, Wednesday?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, and so if we can do that, it won't take just a minute. But if I can get the information and put everything together, we can also do the repeal on the ordinance that sets the, uh, speed limit at a lower limit for Needham and Jamestown Road.
Yeah.
Just so we can make it official.
I'll be at counsel.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to be here all day.
What day did you say, Mr. Commissioner?
Wednesday morning, late morning, 10:30, 11:00, I think.
Probably not.
The, the school board's meeting at 10 o'clock and, uh, just to let y'all understand what happened was they put in their five-year, uh, history to advertise it and it got proofed with paper and all. And when the paper printed, they actually printed two copies of your guys' five-year history and left the schools out, so that pushed them back even further. They was going to have theirs done on the 6th and, uh, that's the reason why they're just going to be now Wednesday. It was through no fault of their own, it was, it was, it wasn't advertised. Um, their meeting's at 10:00 and right after they get through doing that, I'll bring it straight over. So 10:30, 11:00, I'm not sure how long that'll be up to y'all.
Can we do it right after lunch? I mean, does it got to be Wednesday, can we do it Thursday?
Can we do it Thursday?
It's probably Wednesday, 9:00, this program will be here. Just requires for you.
Yeah, I can be.
It's hard to be here.
I'll be. I got a doctor. I think I can be here, okay.
Okay, that gives us three.
Maybe.
Okay, well, I, we'll have a four.
Okay, it won't take just a minute, we'll be done, yeah.
You say at what time?
Uh, probably need to set at, I would say 11:00, if that'd be okay?
Yeah.
You going to just take the message?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it? All right. Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you again for being here, we very much appreciate it, we, this commission appreciates you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Meyer, so faithful to be here for the Waycroft General Harold. Thank you for being here and our, our camera crews. Thank y'all for doing a good job, thank all the citizens that's come to listen. I know it's, it's, it's hard, folks, let me tell you, it's hard out there and it's hard sitting up here. But we, we want, I want, I want to say one thing, I love all of you, no matter whether we agree or not or do agree, I still love you and God loves you most of all. And with that, I'm going to entertain a motion, don't you?
You want to do any, Commissioner?
Oh, do you want to say?
I do, I got something I want to say.
I was hoping, I was hoping that comments are over, now.
No, I'm just glad we're going to be able to get the rest of Jamestown resurfaced out there. I mean, certain of those roads pretty bad shape, looking forward to getting that done. And all the meeting of Jamestown people, you know, y'all just look at, come up with y'all's solution. Y'all've already made your decision one time and do it again. That is it, you, you be good.
Got a good, got good leadership in the Jamestown community, whoever y'all pick is your spokesman.
You might even, you might even get the tax commissioner to be your, uh.
Spokesman.
Spokesman.
Yeah. Since he gives, since he gives you money.
Myself.
He said he didn't need to.
He don't say no.
Okay, all right, anything else? Commissioner Carter, you got anything you want to say, sir?
Oh, other than, you know, I, I keep hearing these, yeah, these statements about we make all of this money. Uh, we can't, we can't raise ourselves or nothing. And the little bit that we get, we appreciate that, but we didn't get here for that. We're not here because you gave us a, a little money. Uh, I, if, in fact, I didn't even know we had a little salary until I was elected. Yeah, I wasn't expecting it. And so, and you know, you, you can be, uh, in the place of a gentleman or a lady without accusing people of things that you don't know anything about. And I hope that, uh, some of our people will have second thoughts because we're not here to cause anybody problems. We're here to help improve our county and our community. And I appreciate, I just, I appreciate every one of you. And, uh, I've known most of you, your daddies and everybody else. I've been here since, uh, since dirt and, uh, so let's, uh, let's try to be a little more, uh, I don't know what, a little more thoughtful of the person that we're talking to. And, uh, and remember that this, these things that we bring up is for you or for our community. And it's not just for us and God bless each one of you, I appreciate you.
Commissioner Burris?
Yeah, uh, just like to thank everyone for coming out on this wet evening and, uh, to the people that stay in the Jamestown area that's going to be impacted by this, uh, the ABC Avenue extension. I hope that some kind of way that we can get all this resolved where it will be, you know, minimal to everyone in that area. And sometimes it's just maybe disconfident or it might be, uh, unpleasant for some. But, you know, I think overall we're trying to do what's best for that area out there. And like I say, it's mainly like an escape route to get out there because we've already had incidents to happen and we don't want anything else to happen in the future where someone is boxed in and can't get out there to get help if they need it. So, uh, just want to say that we're going to keep plugging along with it and, uh, hopefully we can get it resolved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Not wrong now, Mr. Chairman?
One other thing that I'd like to say to Jamestown community and your committee, have picked one of those people on your committee to monitor every train that stops from, from, from Keller Creek north, blocks any of them across it. Date, time, how long they was there. Would that be in your, in your report back to this commission November the night?
Greg, that'd be a good job for you.
He's railroad manager.
He's railroad retired.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Thank all of you again, God bless all of you for coming, I appreciate you, appreciate the staff. We got some wonderful people that work for this government. And, uh, it's, it's, it means a lot to have good people and I appreciate you, all of you. Let's pray for these people that's sick and shut in too, the C-19's taking its toll on a lot of folks. I know a lot of them and you folks know people out there too, so, and it hurts, believe me, it hurts. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion?
Certainly.
Got a second.
Mr. Chairman, I got one other thing I'd like to add. Next week I go and have a major surgery, but I'd like to know that I had the prayers and thoughts of each one of you. You know, you can't do any, you can't do anything for a guy that's any more precious than pray.
Amen.
I don't care what you do. And the next thing to that is give him a pint of blood. Yeah, but God bless you, thank you.
All right, God bless you. Okay. Uh, is that it? All right.
You got a motion in a second, so let's just take a vote, yeah?
Got a motion in a second.
Uh.
All right. Commissioner Pope, Commissioner.
Aye.
We adjourned.